Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness to us. Lord, we pray that you would touch Tom Guston and Terri Alley. Lord, that you would heal their bodies and strengthen them. God is there battling illnesses and things that are coming against their health. We lift them up and ask you to touch them and strengthen them, bless their families, be with them. Lord, we pray that you would bless this meeting tonight, fill the council's hearts with wisdom. Lord, we thank you for all of our civil servants and our elected officials that serve this community. We pray that you would bless our school systems, our educators, and we just thank you for your blessings upon this community and this country in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want to have a roll call?
Holland. Guston. Lee.
Here.
Alley. Bowman.
Here.
Langwell.
Here.
Krauskau.
Here. Okay.
Next, we have the reading and correcting of the journal.
Move we suspend the rules and dispense with the reading and correcting of the journal.
Second.
Spin move by Councilman Krauskau and second by Councilwoman Bowman to dispense the rules and the reading and correcting of the journal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have communications. First, I wanted to introduce the council to Cliff Helby. Cliff, if you can understand. Cliff is our new park supervisor. And Cliff is a lifelong resident here in Miami County, has a long career in parks, has a degree from Purdue. And we're really excited about all the things he's bringing to the position. Do you want to say anything, Cliff, or?
Not really. My first weekend, so I haven't got to wrap my head around everything yet, but it's got a lot of potential, just need some TLC.
Well, I really appreciate it. Thank you. We spoke with Josh Chance, general manager of preutilities.
Wait a second, you had somebody else introduce. On your paper, on your paper, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, assistant. And I don't, I haven't actually heard from Sasha. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Apologize for that. Josh Chance from the utilities, we knew that there were going to be some members missing from the board, and so he asked if it would be prudent to come next month and try to catch more members. I know Tom and Blaine both had questions previously, so wanted to make sure that the demonstration they were here for. And there was one other thing I wanted to mention, too. Since Councilwoman Torrance passed away, we'll have to go ahead and fill some of the positions and committees, and I didn't know if the board would want to do that tonight. I don't think there's anything pressing, but something that should probably be done.
Let's wait till we have more choices.
Sure. Yep.
When everybody's present.
Unless, why don't just give them all to Tom Guston?
All right.
I'll teach him.
And that is all I have for communications.
Cheryl, you got anything for us tonight?
No, I do not have a civic center report.
Okay, well, it's the first of the month. It's pretty great. Okay. All righty. Go on.
Moving on to unfinished business, we have nothing in our unfinished business. At our new business, we have ordinance six, two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance six, two thousand nineteen, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
Move we consider ordinance six, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Spin move by Councilman Krauskau and second by Councilwoman Langwell to consider ordinance six, two thousand nineteen. Roll call.
Lee.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes. Good thing you all voted yes, or we'd be in trouble.
Yes.
All right. And we will have some folks come back and talk with us about that next month, so.
Good. Oh, that was fun.
All we have on our new business.
Anything additional? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, what are we doing about Kmart leaving Peru? Have we got any body coming in?
Yeah, Kmart is more of a symptom of a corporate problem. Sears owns Kmart, and Sears is probably not going to be long for the world. So it's a, it's a, it's not a Peru thing, it's a, it's a corporate thing, so. But you can ask him, I don't know.
Are we soliciting other stores?
So, speaking with our development folks and other people that have been working, trying to get something moving there, the way the situation is now, there's a company out of New York that owned a lot of the stores, the actual property that Kmart's rented from. So, they owned a lot throughout the nation. They're not really responding to us now. I don't know if that's because they're, right now with the big announcement, they're getting a lot of offers and a lot of contacts from different communities. We have had folks interested in the building, we have had developers interested in the building, but without the company in New York responding to us, getting back to us at this moment, I imagine, once they don't have a paying tenant, they might be a little bit more receptive to calls about, hey, we have some ideas here. But as of right now, we're not getting a lot of feedback from them.
Gabe, would it do any good for the people in the community to write letters? That's what I've wondered.
To whom?
I don't know.
Who are we going to write them to?
Yeah, and the thing is, the company in New York, pretty specialized company, that I don't know how much they would take into consideration, local opinion on their business. It's a pretty straightforward business when you own the properties on a corporate level to rent out to corporate renters, leases. So, like I said, I think that, once they don't have a paying tenant there, they might be a little bit more apt to return our calls.
So there you go.
Well, it makes it hard for the city of Peru. People have to go out of town to shop.
Yeah, I agree.
And, you know, this really should be a priority. Somewhere, somehow, somebody.
Thing I don't understand is, they got a Kmart store in Coquemou. There's a thousand places to shop in Coquemou. Peru has almost no place to shop, and they closed the one in Peru, which, by the way, was profitable.
Mm-hmm.
And kept the one in Coquemou.
I'm sure there's a ransom to that.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Well, they closed Sears in Fort Wayne, they closed Sears in Indianapolis, they closed, and those, those had to be profitable stores, and they've closed those, so the whole Sears idea of how they ran their business was, was way behind the times, and unfortunately, when Sears bought Kmart, that kind of had the same problem, so.
Plus, the Sears CEO is trying to turn some things around, get moving again on something, so they may be holding off finding out what he's trying to do with that, too. Because that was in the news just the other day.
When he's closed this Kmart, they're not coming back, obviously, so.
Right.
Yep.
May I?
Yes, you may.
My name's Kathleen Plouffe. I'm going to talk about you, you know, Peru that.
Can you come up to the microphone, please? It's being, it's being recorded, and they can't hear you on TV if you're back there. Introduce yourself again and.
I'm Kathleen Plouffe. An answer to your question, or to give you all a little bit more information, gentleman here is Brad Williams. He, I'm going to take off your hat and stand for anyway. He owns Town and Country Furniture and Overstock. He can tell you, if you will.
You need to keep talking.
Okay, I'm sorry. He can tell you and explain, I don't know if any of you have gone out to his store lately, would be a good thing to do. He gets overstock from all over the Midwest, buybacks from Walmart, Amazon. Brad?
Target.
You need to. Anyway, he's got, there's no reason to buy kitchen appliances, I mean, well, coffee makers, all these kind of things, vacuums, anywhere but in Peru. We can keep our dollars here, that's what these young entrepreneurs are doing, is they're trying to make everybody keep their money here. We just need to look around and become more aware, because this is a place, and this is my home, this is our home. We need to spend our money here and not be so quick to go someplace else. But, anyway, I don't know if you want Brad to talk all about what he's got going, or, but it's a great place, so. Anyway, I'm all about shopping local, leading local and whatnot, but just, I couldn't sit back, Mayor Kurt, and not say something, so.
Kathleen, is that the store at the Plaza?
It is, it is. It's the old J.C. Penney Dillman's building, so, yeah.
Yeah, and that's exactly what it takes, is people like Brad, starting a business and taking that leap.
Exactly.
To open up a business and expose themselves to a kind of financial burden.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's an exciting young man. There's this group of young entrepreneurs that are just really trying to bring everything they can into our city, so it's exciting, Mayor, and we just need to support them and encourage them, so. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Just wanted to make that a point. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Could I step up?
Certainly.
Hello.
Brad?
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
My name is Brad. Bought the old furniture store up there. We do still sell furniture, but we have moved on to Target, Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot, Amazon, we're buying it by the pallets, by the truckloads. Getting a truckload about every two weeks right now, so just about everything in there, from clothes to shoes to toys to school supplies to home improvements. I mean, we got light fixtures, ceiling fans, just about everything. We are currently looking to possibly move, we're trying to stay in Peru, though, just trying to find a better fit location, and lots of work and stuff that needs done in the building we're in. But, yeah, we are trying to supply just about anything you can need. We just got into clothing, so we do have a lot of clothing and shoes that we're going to be going through and sorting and trying to get hung on the racks and everything like that as well, so.
What are you looking for in a building?
Well, we went and looked at a couple today over by the old Alco, the building in between there and the farm store. It was about a little bit, little under twenty thousand square foot, but it could work, so. We've also, we tried contacting the people about the Kmart building, as soon as we heard they were going out of business and didn't really get too far, didn't get any kind of answers, so.
Right.
They got kind of shut down, but we are looking to grow a little bit more. It started off just two pallets a week, and now we're doing one to two truckloads every two weeks, so.
That's awesome.
It's growing. So, people are supporting it, but, yeah, I mean, there's lots of things you can find in there that you wouldn't be able to find in Peru before.
That's awesome, I didn't realize that.
Yeah.
Have you done any advertising?
We do a lot on Facebook, a little bit on the newspaper and radio, not a whole lot right now. We just, we dumped a lot of money just into getting the startup inventory and things like that, but we are going to start doing some more local advertising as well.
Awesome.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the lead to speak.
Thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Faust.
Now, before everybody jumps up and down.
Up here, please. Come up here. If you want to talk, you're going to talk so everybody on TV can hear you.
Hey. You know better.
Hi, my name is John Faust, live in the northwest part of Peru. Maybe you would be on the wrong side of the tracks, you never know. Depends where you're at when the train sets. What I'm getting at is, born and raised in Peru, we used to have the CNO and the nickel plate and the Wabash, they could tie up the town in no problem, but they never set for as long as they do now. There was one day, in fact, I drove it, I went, I saw there was a train across Duke Street, which I lived close to, so I'll just run down to the cemetery and come over that way. They had that one blocked. Basically, they had the whole west end of Peru blocked all the way down to, it's the street right there, the Squar D. No, it was past Duke.
Squar D, Tipi Canoe.
Yeah, Tipi Canoe.
And the engine was sitting there. Now, I realize the engineer, he gets red block, that's where he stops. But I'm wondering, and I know that we can't arrest them anymore and all that kind of stuff, I don't know whether it ain't good, anyway. But, I was wondering if this, now, it doesn't, it's not that big of a hardship for us, but we have people in our area that do walk, and they cross the tracks by walking, you got bicyclists. It's pretty hard to crawl underneath a train when you've got, which is kind of dangerous, anyway. I'm wondering if the city could maybe just talk to the, like, yard master and see if there wouldn't be some way that they could open up the crossings a little bit more. At least Grant Street was never blocked in the old days. I mean, that was, that was the rule. Of course, they don't have the train crews to get out and break the trains like they used to. But that's not really the people of Peru's fault, that's the politicians and the road roads getting together and doing all that. I'm, I'm just wondering if there was some way that you just have a meeting with them? I mean, you can't force them to do anything, they do what they want to, but it's really, I mean, when you got the whole west end of a town plugged up, and they're using that track, that's a double track in there, they're using it as a passing track, which the train could sit there for maybe up to an hour.
Longer.
Or, or longer. My wife times them. But, anyway, so I was just kind of a, it's more for the good of the, of the city, so that people can get around. If you have an emergency, I know, go down under the underpass, but, you know, if somebody is walking, that's kind of a trick. I mean, that's, that's quite a bit of a hike. So I was just wondering if somebody would, if there was a way that you could maybe contact the railroad and have a sit-down meeting with them and just politely ask them if they wouldn't do that, or if they would be longer, shorter periods of time in the blocking of the crossings, or at least leave one open, so. That's all.
Can I say something?
Don't look at me, I have no.
We have a retiree here in the audience, I see. I wonder what his take on whether he thinks the yard master would come and talk to us would be.
Well, in the first place, there's no yard master in Peru, and matter of fact, right now, there's no officials at all in Peru. Part of the problem you're seeing now, that you didn't see ten or twenty years ago, trains are far longer now than they used to be, and the government has told them that they have to have what's called positive train control. And to make that work, they're trying to have a scheduled railroad. Now, I know that's an oxymoron, I've worked out there for forty-two years, and there's no such thing as a scheduled railroad, but the people down in Atlanta think that there is, and they're the ones that make all these decisions. Scheduled railroad means that when a train goes by west Peru out there, it cannot go out by west Peru until the time that they say it's supposed to arrive in Peru. What happens is, this is a junction between the Fort Wayne or Lake Division and the Decatur Division, and a lot of times, those dispatchers on the Lake Division are not in accordance with the ones on the Decatur Division. So what happens is, you get two or three trains in Peru at the same time, there's no place to put them. They have to be where they're at. Now, there's some of that road crossing blockage, I'm sure could be eliminated. When I worked out there, I never used, I never wanted to block Grant Street. I always thought, there's an ambulance that could be coming down there with somebody that has to get to the hospital. I always thought blocking Grant Street was a terrible idea. But I understand now, with the length of these trains, you only have so much trackage in Peru. There's only so much there, and they try to get too many trains into Peru, all at the same time, to where you have that problem, and I don't see it getting any better. Ideally, of course, if you could build an underpass at Grant Street, would be perfect. That would give you two of them. That would, that would solve the majority of your problem, but until that happens, you're going to have these crossings blocked. And, speaking on the railroad's behalf is, railroads pay a lot of taxes around here. A lot of money goes into this county, this town, this state, because of them railroads. And I know it's frustrating as hell, because I walk, and a lot of times, Grant Street's blocked, and cops here, I do cross over those trains. I know how to do it. I'm not going to get hurt. I know how to do it. But a lot of people, a lot of kids, and I've seen some kids on, crossing over Duke Street, you never crawl under a train. That's, that's the worst thing you can do, and I've had to tell some kids not to do that on occasion, but it's a problem that everybody hates, but I don't see a solution for it.
Yeah, I know, the conversations I've had, just like what you said, the trains are longer and dispatches in another area, and.
All the dispatchers are in Atlanta, Georgia.
Yeah, so, it makes it very difficult, and then also, with the trains being a, essentially a federal utility, the federal government has jurisdiction over the trains.
Exactly.
And trying to get the federal government to change their ways is very difficult. We have had this, this issue has been brought up throughout Indiana, a lot of mayors have tried different things, and we, we've spoke with Jackie Walorski and her staff, we spoke with Donnelly when he was in office. There's not, there's not a lot of movement as far as them really changing their ways as far as like an underpass. Underpasses are very expensive and difficult, overpass is cheaper, and by cheaper, I mean, an overpass is only ten to fifteen million dollars. An underpass is about double that, because you have to put into it the type of drainage in an underpass, so they don't flood. So there's far more engineering as far as keeping water out of an underpass than worrying about the watershed of an overpass. There is grants, I can't remember what the name of the grant was.
Tracks.
Tracks was the name of the grant. It's a competitive grant, and there's a lot of communities that have no underpass or over, underpass, and they prioritize those communities that don't have the blessing that we have with the underpass, and so, we're far back in line when it comes to grants, because we do have one. And with that being said, even if you get the grant, it's a significant cost, so, you know, we have to weigh our, weigh our options as far as how much we want to spend versus the need of it. I have spoken with our fire and our police about how much this hinders our emergency response. Effectively, it, it's not an issue for our emergency response.
Mayor, what?
Well, I will tell you what, the, the train master that's responsible for Peru right now is in Lafayette, filling the shortage they had of, of officials. But generally, we have a train master here on occasion, not, not every day or anything like that, but as far as, there's no other officials around Peru, though. So.
He mentioned one thing about children crossing. That has been a concern of mine, because down at Grant Street and even down from the underpass down to Tipi Canoe, I've seen kids cross there, and it scares me to death. I know the police are busy, but from three o'clock to three-thirty, when the kids are getting out, there's usually a train every day, so maybe if more, if they could be there and scare the kids, tell them they shouldn't be doing it, I don't know, but I, I just crave it, I'm going to see the kids doing that.
Right.
You know, there are people, especially in the area that we live in, that maybe work at Kroger's, they don't have a car, or they only have one car and two people working. To get to Kroger's, if you had to ride a bicycle or walk to work, and there was a train on the track, which they're almost always, it's now, Duke Street is almost always blocked, they'd have to go down to the underpass, across, and then all the way back down to the other end of town. You know, people in cars, yeah, it's an inconvenience, but it's doable, but pedestrians and bicyclists can't do that. If they're, if they're out for leisure, fine, but if they're trying to get to work or school, that's an awful hardship. If there was just a way to build a pedestrian-type overpass or some, something to help these people, because I don't think the trains are ever going to change, turn up, yes.
Well, the pedestrian path they just built for the nickel plate going across thirty-one was still over five million dollars. I mean, obviously, ours wouldn't have to be that long, but it'd still be substantial costs.
Yeah.
And, yeah, there's no good way about it.
Yeah, but we wouldn't need one like they have got. I mean, it's an overpass on the, on the, or pedestrian walk, that's a pretty fancy one. If you get, if you go up in, like, Chicago, Detroit, or some of those areas, they've got pedestrian walks over the interstates, and pretty much they're, I don't know, metal framework with the cage over it so nobody can jump over, and this guy's, would be a lot cheaper than, yeah, that one, that one over Coquemou, that's, that's, that's a nice looking one, and you're right, that's a lot of money. So, anyway, there was just something that I think Peru needs to try to work on. If there's no one around to make a decision, it's kind of hard to do it, and.
There's things they can do that, there's no excuse for them trains that sit there now. You have a yard cab, they could take the conductor back and cut, for instance, Grant Street. If they're going to be there that long, there's no reason for them not to do that, but if you're talking ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes, no. That's not going to work. It's just not going to work.
Yeah, I have a question. I often think about the liability for the city. God forbid a kid crawling under gets, you know.
Railroad property, it isn't, it's the city's property, it's a railroad property.
Yeah, I know, but still, some parent could say, well, the city shouldn't allow.
Well, and we get lawsuits weekly, that where they say, well, we'll name the, we'll name the city, even if it's a wreck out in the county.
Right.
They'll name, most of the time, if there's an accident, the city is going to be named as, they name the governor of the state, they name the sheriff's department, but really, literally, they do. They name the governor, the sheriff, the mayor, the city, the city council.
Right.
We're named in most lawsuits, just as a, we're going to go ahead and name everybody and see what sticks.
Right.
So, they, it's, it's pretty frivolous with, with that. And Dustin, you might be able to speak more intelligently than I can about the extent we have liability, but from what I've seen, the city really doesn't carry any liability for that.
Right. Kurt said it best, that's railroad property, it's not our property.
And railroad would pretty much cover that.
That we have no control over the trains, so there'd be, I would say, no liability on this.
Good.
Yeah. And honestly, there's not anything we can do about it. I mean, yeah, we could build a pedestrian walkway or something, but.
Build a wall, they've got extra money. They're not using, they're not using that money on the southern border, so they can build a wall beside the train.
Yeah, but to justify the cost to attack areas to build a pedestrian walkway is a whole different issue.
Anything further? Nope. Any further? Nope. Oh, yes?
Want me to come up there?
If you want to be heard.
Mike Lund is my name. I want to talk about potholes.
Oh.
As a guy that just lost a tire with three thousand miles on it on Meridian Street, of all streets in Indianapolis, I'm, I want to know, I know what causes potholes, but what really causes them? Are the materials we're using to build and resurface our roads good enough? I mean, it seems like kind of a cop-out to keep blaming the weather. We've had the same weather forever, but the pothole situation. Are the materials we're using to build and resurface our roads good enough? I mean, it seems like kind of a cop-out to keep blaming the weather. We've had the same weather forever. But the pothole situation seems to be getting worse. Are we not putting enough material in there when we resurface and build streets? Are, uh, the contractors that are doing this work, are they not doing their job? I'm fairly certain my little car is not causing or exacerbating the pothole problem. But when I look out my window on East Main Street, see the armada of loaded dump trucks going west on Main Street, I got to think they're probably part of the problem. And I don't understand, number one, since Peru is surrounded by dual-lane highways, why they're going down Main Street in Peru?
That's a state highway.
I know, I know, I, I know we can't keep them from doing that, but seems like we ought to be able to do something about that.
That's where their business is located, down there past the movie theater, or past the, past the senior center, so that's...
Yeah, but you can turn right there on Benton Street and head out on twenty-four.
I agree. That would be a discussion between, uh, the mayor and...
Could we ask them, maybe?
Well, and we do have designated truck routes, and that is a designated truck route that was passed, um, by ordinance. So, um, the, the quality of the road on Main Street, um, all the way through, nineteen is still state highway, it used to all be state highway. It's a good base road. To your point about, you know, are they putting the right materials down? Years ago, they, I, and I might be wrong in the details, so don't quote me on any of this exactly, but I think the NDOT changed their standards on the materials they could use. And part of that was being able to use recycled materials in the mix. After it was used, it was a cheaper product, after it was used, I think most people agreed that it was a, an inferior product. And city no longer uses, uh, any, any paving with recycled materials, all has to be a hundred percent virgin, and that's in our, um, bid package that we sent out. Unfortunately, West Main, North Broadway, um, I don't know, there might be some other, you know, as part of North Broadway up to Mexico Road, um, were roads that were paved with recycled materials, and you're seeing that now.
Was West, West Main, when you resurfaced that, you used recycled materials on that? How long ago has that been?
It was two, it was, I, I can tell you exactly, it was two thousand and five from Broadway to, uh, to the jewelry store.
Yeah.
And then two thousand and six from...
The rest of the way.
Rest of the way.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And the thing is, you know, I don't think there was any way, the, the, the product was sold to the city as, um, a, a, a good product. And I know the city stopped using the recycled materials after they saw the way it was deteriorating. So, um, now we're playing catch-up with some of that.
Do we have inspectors out there when you resurface a road? Is there city inspectors out there that see, make sure that the contractors are doing what they're supposed to be doing?
The street department goes out and works with them.
I mean, this is not, uh, this is not a question, I, uh, Interstate sixty-five over, it, over the Tippecanoe River had to be redone because they found the contractors weren't using the material or the techniques they were supposed to.
So the city of Peru's street department works hand and glove with our contractors when they pave their roads. So they're right there with them, uh, helping out, and those are the guys that are going to have to maintain those roads after the company leaves. So they don't want to have to deal with a road that isn't put in, into, uh, inferior standards. So it's in their best interest to make sure that the roads are put in at the best quality possible. And, you know, it's, it's those street department guys that are on the ground working that first call to the administration's attention that the recycled materials were an inferior product. So, um, but it was a cheaper product, and it, and unfortunately, it was used throughout the state during that time before people realized that it was an inferior product.
But we're not using that anymore, right?
No, and our bid package is a specifically say they cannot have, um, uh, recycled materials, it has to be a hundred percent virgin material.
Okay, well, I was just...
But if you look out at, at E and B paving on twenty-four, there's a mountain of recycled...
Uh, yeah, I was just out there the other day.
Out there. So, you know, I don't, I'm not saying they use it, but it's sitting there.
They're using it somewhere, or they wouldn't have it to...
Well, they could be used on less, on less heavily traveled roads, you know, on sub, on subdivisions and things like that, that aren't going to carry the weight of some, some, some dump trucks and things like that. So I imagine it would, it would be appropriate for that, but on main, main thoroughfares, yeah, it's just not going to, it's just not going to stick.
Well, I, the only thing I would suggest, if you got a hold of the, the gravel place out there and see if, why can't they turn on Benton Street and head out on twenty-four instead of going down Main Street? Because you know that's got to be contributing heavily to the damage of our street down there. A loaded dump truck, I don't know what they weigh, but it's got to be a lot. So, um, that's all I want to know.
May I say something?
Yeah.
I did want to, um, Mike, I wanted to, to let you know that I was talking to the guys at the street department today, and we do, we have had a change in the department head down there and the assistant. The new assistant's name is Adam Sheets. He was in my office this morning to let me know that he has, um, started a course with ITAP. It's through Purdue University, it's a road scholar school. It's twelve, it's twelve weeks or twelve hours, something like that, and they learn all the different aspects of paving and the materials and things like that. So, he will be, I mean, he's going to be an asset after he takes the school, and he's doing it right now as far as being able to watch our contractors and actually knowing what he's looking for. So that's a step in the right direction.
And Dave Thorpe, our current supervisor, he's taken those classes in the past, too.
Right.
So, and, and like I said, those guys that work at the street department, they know the asphalt business and they know those streets well, and it's definitely within their best interest to make sure that it's being put in properly, because they have to maintain it.
Well, if, if, if you use a better product, it would seem to me overall it would be cheaper for us. Because if you don't have to repair something every three months, wouldn't it be cheaper, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you, you spend a little more upfront, but you spend less maintaining.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, we've covered roads, we've covered trains, anything else? Buses, planes, I don't care, anything else.
Boats on the wall.
Boats, boats on the wall. Yeah, it's... Anything further up here? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Boot, second. Halls in favor?
Aye.
Goodbye.